Good evening, everyone. Happy Valentine's Day to those of you who didn't get a chance to see earlier. Welcome. We'll begin our meeting as we always do with a public audience for the rules of this board adopted when we were appointed. We invite members of the public to speak for five minutes. If anyone feels they need more time, they can certainly call my office and make an appointment or after the meeting or at any other time, any of us are available to speak if you feel we need longer than that. So we'll begin with public audience. I saw Mr. Kalashman, so we'll begin with you.
Thank you for allowing me to address the board. Let's just know the chickens are coming home to roost. And I'm glad that our representatives and our senator is here. Because as you all know, I ran for state representative. And my opponent is here, and he lied. He lied to you, he lied to me, he wouldn't debate, and he just avoided all the questions. He was asked, will there be a tax increase? He said he voted for no taxes. We're in a situation now where we're just going to be loaded up with taxes. And the big problem is, he lies, the Democrats support him, and the Republican loyal opposition never says a word because they don't want to rock the boat. So we have a situation in town where we're going to increase our education department, the pensions are going to be monkeyed with, in my opinion, and it's just tax, tax, tax. And it seems that it's contagious. We have on the national scene the Clinton Operation lie, lied to us. On the local scene, the Malloy operation lied to us, time and time again. Every time we talked, there was a surplus. After every election, the surplus disappeared. And now, all of a sudden, we're told we're going to raise different things. I don't own a gun. But it's wrong to tamper with the Second Amendment, and it's wrong to expect a person to pay $300 a proposed increase in gun permits. What are we going to do here? We're going to have it so the rich have weapons, and the poor, they have to do it the best way they can. It's wrong. And here again, first selectwoman, the board, you allowed this man to lie time and time and time again. And now you're in a situation, you don't know what to do. You don't know what to do. You're going to have to, what are you going to do about the pensions for the teachers that you're going to inherit? You're going to lose half your money. And don't, you know, don't go by what he's going to tell you because he's going to lie to you again. He's going to tell you, don't worry about it, we're going to fix it. They're not going to fix it. They're going to have to increase taxes. And everybody in this room, their taxes are going to be increased. Your automobiles and your houses. And that's all I have to say. But it's wrong. It's wrong. Time and time and time again, we're lied to, and nobody says a word about it. Thank you for allowing me to address this.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Kalashman. Is there anyone else who would like to speak up?
Joan Koch, 26, would come by. At the last meeting, First Selectman Lisa Heedna, who was more interested in strict hedonism to the five-minute rule than allowing me to make a public service announcement concerning the federal government's documentary, Chasing the Dragon, about real-life experience with opioid addiction that would be shown on SCTV this month. This documentary is also on YouTube. First Selectman Lisa Heedna has continued to misrepresent the five-minute rule for public audience. Public audience at the Board of Selectmen meetings was established as a result of a court order stipulated agreement, which is on the wall over here, between me and the town of Simsbury that is affixed to the wall in the main meeting room, right there. First Selectman Lisa Heedna did not establish the rule, it was determined by the courts. The stipulated agreement also states that a half hour should be set aside for public audience. Since the speakers do not use all the time, I should have been given the extra 30 seconds to finish my remarks. I would like to suggest that First Selectman Lisa Heedna review the resolution for compliance. The Public Building Committee has once again reviewed the placement of SCTV at Boy Scout Hall, which they decided was not acceptable due to it being on the National Historic Register. Another discussion was using Central School, but that would only allow 1,500 square feet, much less than the present space of 1,600 square feet. Now there are only two acceptable places for SCTV. One is the basement of the library, and the other is a new building at Henry James Middle School. Henry James Middle School is not an alternative since the architect for Eno Hall has assigned the space used by SCTV as the new senior center office. The SCTV addition to Henry James requires a vote for renovations and additions that might not be approved and will take years to complete. Too many variables. The only logical place is the 2,900 square feet in the library basement now occupied by the Friends of the Library. Many members of the Public Building Committee have privately stated that the library would satisfy the needs of SCTV and continue to expand the use of the library as a community center with the entire infrastructure already in place. The only obstacle is the political pressure of the Friends of the Library to use the basement for the used books and other materials. If the Friends of the Library would move all their materials to Boy Scout Hall, they would leave the space in the library for SCTV. Political pressure should not motivate the town to delay the move of SCTV to the library. My scenario satisfied the needs of the Eno Hall to place the senior center office in SCTV space, a place for the Friends of the Library in Boy Scout Hall, which will be cost-saving and expedient, and a permanent place for SCTV to use and expand their mission. At the last meeting, Selectman Chris Kelly, a proponent of Town Manager, stated that he would like to hold meetings to start the process for Town Manager. I found out tonight, the residents of Simsbury voted for a Town Manager, and this is a mandate for a process to start in a timely manner. Tonight, Selectman Chris Kelly will convene and thank you to get the process started, a subcommittee meeting to start the process for the selection of a Town Manager. And there are several meetings that he, several times that he has selected for the meetings. So I thank him for that. At the last meeting, Jamie Rabbit, Director of Planning and Community Development, made a presentation to the board and the resident trends through fiscal year 2013 in Simsbury with all the developments fully developed. Increase in population and increase in future revenues. The conclusion to the trends, housing trends, 1423 units built, population increase to 2794, and the grand list growth, 131,000, 129,630. This projection defies all the economic theories on supply and demand. The assumptions are questionable and the results circumspect. I would hope that the Board of Selectmen do not use these flawed models as a projection for future spending. According to the Bloom Management Report, Capital Asset Reporting, they recommended a capital asset inventory to assure that all town assets are properly accounted for. I have a picture of Bondo Hills Triangle that is in disrepair. Is this bond in the inventory, and are there plans for demolishing it? Why is the library using a fan to air-condition the room for the computer, hard drives, and equipment? It appears that the library's heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system has issues. Is there a plan to solve the HVAC issues? All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, News Feed, on Facebook, Twitter at Joan Koch, and Simsbury Forum Topics. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in public audience? Okay, seeing none. We are very pleased to have our legislative delegation with us tonight. There have been some interesting proposals by the governor. It's now switching over to the legislature to fix it. And we are very supportive and appreciative of our representatives who have worked very closely with not only this board but all the Farmington Valley towns. So I introduce State Senator Kevin Witkos and State Representative Donkey.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us here this evening. It's great to be here with Senator Witkos, and thank you so much for your great leadership of the town. Last week, the governor released his budget, which is devastating on many levels, but has an impact on Simsbury and many towns in the fact that it transfers a lot of costs, including teachers' pensions, now to the towns. Simsbury will now see an increase, if this proposal goes through, an increase of $4.5 million in costs resulting in a tax increase for Simsbury residents and burdening our town services and our Board of Ed services. And the, no matter what anybody else says, this budget has tax increases, it has elimination of the tax credit, it has other related proposed tax increases. I think it's a devastating budget all the way around. I continue to fight, as I know Senator Witkos does, for fiscal restraint, responsibility, and structural reforms. And certainly, we need a balanced budget, but not on the backs of towns like Simsbury, which historically have done quite well managing their finances, and the Board of Ed as well, done quite well in providing first-rate services and education to our children. So we're committed, I know Kevin is as well, to, this is a long process. This is only the beginning, where the governor delivers his budget, and it goes through the Pope Pipeline all the way through, hopefully no later than mid-June, early June. But there'll be many iterations of this budget through the committee process. So it's very important that you stay involved and our constituents stay involved and informed. I have a packet in front of you, a lot of information. I know Lisa's shared a lot of information with you relative to the cuts and the impact on Simsbury. And so we're here just to reassure you and that we're advocating for you at the Capitol and to answer any questions.
One of the things that I felt was accurate about the governor's budget was finally, he admitted that we have, we're looking at a $1.7 billion deficit. That had always been an argument as to the size of the deficit that the state of Connecticut has been facing. Part of it is structural change that guys enact in the towns, and we just can't seem to get our act together at the state level to do the kinds of things that are necessary because it can't be business as usual. This may be the time to change. The governor's doing a few things in his budget. John spoke about some of the numbers. But some of the other things he's trying to do, in addition to elimination of property tax credit, which $200 if you own your own home, you can reduce, which was originally 500, down to 300, 200 now disappears. There's some cost shifting going on, which ultimately, as you know, would cause you to either dip into your reserves or, you know, raise taxes. There are tax increases, alcohol, tobacco, a couple of things, you name it, that are in the budget. But what I thought was interesting, the governor creates a municipal accountability review board, and he's identified 20 communities that he wants to have a state oversight panel delve into that, those communities to see if, it's going to be based on a couple of things, on their poor credit rating, which, you know, the state's not a prime example to be leading the charge here, and also on the size of debt that the communities have. And most of the communities in Connecticut have a very healthy reserve and actually very good rating comparable to the state of Connecticut. But what I thought was interesting was the argument, and I know Mayor Bronin has been out to Simsbury before and saying we have to create a partnership because as the cities rise, so do the suburbs that surround Hartford, was there was a tier that was tier five, and it would be upon the wishes of either the First Selectmen or the mayor to voluntarily enter that. And that would, not by vote of Town Council or City Council or Board of Selectmen, but solely by the mayor or First Selectmen. And that would give the, similar to the Waterbury Oversight Board, which the state enacted and basically could take all the contracts that had been entered into with the city and all of its employees, and to nullify those and start over from scratch. And that's what's happening in the budget proposal out there. And that's not getting a lot of play out in the press because it's buried in the minutia of the budget. And that's concerning to me. Number one, that the state thinks that they can tell the towns better than how they manage their towns, but also to create this entity that a lot of people aren't aware of, and a singular person has the ability to throw their town or city into that. I don't know how a due process would work there with the governing body of the municipalities. Generally, it doesn't lie with one person. So that'll flesh out. But, you know, as John said, last Wednesday, the governor delivered his budget address. On Thursday, the Appropriations Committee started a meeting. This year, unlike other years, the commissioners are working with the legislative branch of government. They're answering questions as to what's our best return on investment if we have to limit three similar programs, pick the one that does the best job, maybe that's the one we'll fund. Those conversations are actually happening. In past years, the commissioners were told, do not cooperate, if you will. They were told, basically, I support the governor's budget as proposed. That's not happening this year, which is a good sign. It's a good sign that the numbers are tighter in the legislature because it's forcing everybody to work together. And Mr. Kalashman, I will share with you, sir, you are correct in that we are going to be delivering a better project, product for Simsbury than the governor did. I haven't found a legislator yet that said, we're willing to wipe out ECS and throw the teachers' municipal pension plan on top of that. Do I think the governor's budget is realistic? Absolutely not. He looks at creating, saving $700 million in the first year in state employee concessions and $868 million in the second year, an additional $168 million. There's no way that's going to happen. Four years ago, there was a suggestion box. It was anticipated a hole was built into the budget to fund, find $250 million. Didn't find anything. So it's unrealistic to think that $700 million is going to come up in this type of savings. So there's a lot that's going on. Reading through the budget package, I don't know if you gave some things. So part of that is there's the opening of the SEBAC agreement. I won't take too much longer. But SEBAC is the state employee's pension and healthcare. So that's one contract. And everything else about wages and hours and uniforms and meal allowance and shift differentials, that's contained in their own individual contracts. So 16 of those contracts expired last June. So the governor's currently negotiating those, and those, he's not going to find the 700 million. So he's got to open up SEBAC because that's where the money is, if you will, and the costs. Because healthcare, state employees get great, they won't argue at this point, they get great health insurance costs. $5 copays, if you get a copay, drugs are $3 or $5, something like that. But you talk to the rank and file members, and they'll say, we'd gladly pay more because we realize that this was negotiated under Governor Rowland 20 years ago and just kept getting extended. And that's due to expire 2022. So only can the state do something there if the unions, the bargaining units, agree to open up their contract. Otherwise, they could just stand there and cross their arms and say, we're not willing to open up our contracts. That's why the governor threw out in his speech, potentially, I can't find that those savings, we're looking at layoffs in the amount of 4,200 employees, which is unrealistic too. So he provided an idea of what departments would, layoffs would be found. Some of them are hit our most vulnerable population, so I don't see the legislature approving that either. So we'll see where we're going. I don't anticipate a budget coming to you, any numbers, until the end of April at the very earliest because one of our biggest numbers comes in three days after April 15th, and that seems to be the number that people want to see where the revenue projections, if the projections met the estimates. So that's the best-case scenario for you all to determine, you know, how are you going to move. Planning is, the governor's is the worst-case scenario, and it's going to get better from there. How much better, I can't tell you how much better it's going to be. But there's conversations, and we're actually having some deep conversations internally about creating a revenue source for municipalities, maybe take away some of the state revenue rather than enacting a new tax, but letting the municipalities manage that to help offset some of your costs. But it's very new in those discussions, so we don't quite know where we're fleshing that out yet. So it's kind of, we are on the budget. Public hearings have just started in Hartford on a lot of the committees, so bills are rampant, and people are upset. I had shared with the First Selectmen and Representative Hampton, I was a little delayed getting here because I had eight organizers show up at my front door tonight. Now they're going around visiting all the senators at their homes, which personally, I don't, I think that's improper to do. And we have offices in the legislative office building. We're there to meet with you at those times, and to disrupt your families is, I just think is not professional. And these are folks that are part of organizations that are paid to do this. So I just sense more of that's going to happen as the budget gets tighter and tighter and we're trying to figure out what's going on. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Members of the board?
And the municipal oversight board is included in the packet for details on that. And also, just to clarify, was it 31 towns got, or cities got increases out of the 169, about?
I remember.
So basically, we're putting, they're pitting towns against cities and other town, you know, I was talking to my friend from Hampden. He said, life is great, I just got $10 million increase, and it's all over the board in terms of, in terms of increases and cuts. But it certainly is devastating, and I know will be devastating to your board and to the Board of Ed.
Questions from members of the board?
I have a question. So it's a one, it's, the number out there, 1.5, 1.7 billion, is a hard number to get your head around. It is a huge number. So how do you close that gap without raising taxes? Is there, you can't cut your way out of that, it looks like. So are you thinking about different legs of the tax structure out there? What is the plan? Is there, or is it too soon to know what that is?
I think personally, from my side, it's a little too soon to figure out what that is. We're trying to find efficiencies, and from what I understand, there's some duplication in services through the different agencies. So we've got to do consolidations there first to make sure we're still delivering the services that need to be delivered, but do it effectively and efficiently. I think part of it is to see the governor's, what are you going to get in the contracts signed? Because that, besides town aid, which is education, that, employees are the next biggest dollar amount, and then Medicaid comes after that. So, I mean, if we, we've got to go where the money is, as others say. So you've got to figure out where that is. But the legislature can't determine that, so we've got to wait for the executive branch to kind of tell us, you know, this is what they're getting in wages, or, you know, if they're retroactive, or is it a wage freeze, or did I get concessions, a little bit more copays? We don't know. I do understand that the, according to the governor, during his budget address, he said, they're moving along, but we're going almost on a year now. So we just don't know that part yet. Again, he targeted $700 million. But one of the things I'll throw back to the towns is the governor had suggested that he's got $75 million in unallocated dollars in the first year and $80 million in the second year, if anybody has any ideas to help him out. And initially, thought that was to buy off legislators for yes vote. But then I was talking to some of my colleagues, and they said, well, maybe towns could use that to start forming different collaboratives and different sharing of services. They already do a lot, but they were thinking more on the education side, is what one of my friends said. They said, you know, every town has its own superintendent, every town has its own assistant superintendent, every town has its own principal, its own vice principal, and there's a lot of top-heavy on the administration side. So what, if there's a superintendent ready to close to retirement or contract expired, maybe there should be a pool given through a pilot program to allow two or three communities to share a service of, say, a superintendent, and then they all each have assistant superintendents to run their schools as a cost-savings measure, and the state would pick that up for a certain period of time. Then all the towns and that would benefit as one idea to use the $75 million. Again, I'd rather see the ideas coming from the municipalities than the state putting them out because right now, our track record is not that great. So, you know, again, that's something that you all, if you have some suggestions on things, and the Boards of Ed, I'm going from here to Avon next to share with them the same thing I'm sharing with you tonight, so.
And the idea of another tax on our citizens is really untenable, you know. We hear all the time from young people, middle-aged, older folks, who just can't stay here or want to stay here in Simsbury. So we can't pass this on to our residents. It's just overbearing.
Well, with all due respect to what you're trying to do, not raising taxes, that leaves us to raise taxes. And you are leaving us on a very tight timeline to decide whether we have to raise taxes in anticipation of what you are going to do to us. And that puts us in a very difficult position. So if you guys are not done in time for us to formulate a new budget, we are put in the position of raising taxes on our residents, and you can say, well, it didn't come from you, and it's coming from us, but it's all because of the same problem.
We won't have the number to you. I mean, you've got to, if you want to budget conservatively, budget fairly, you use the governor's number. I mean, it's, what we present is going to be better, but we just, it's so early for us. We don't, we just don't know.
I think to Cheryl's point, it's not clear that you can find efficiencies to get to 1.5 billion. I mean, we would love it if you could cut and find efficiencies and not have to raise taxes, but the numbers, if you just look at it, our concern is that they don't add up, and there will be a tax increase. And the question is, is it at the municipal level or at a different level?
You can't look at this year in isolation.
Right.
Because in the past six or seven years, when Malloy came in, there was this $3.7 billion budget deficit. We had a tax increase. And then two years after that, we had another, over $2 billion, $2.4 billion deficit tax increases again. Now we're at another $1.7 billion deficit. So what, if we can enact some structural changes, we've had massive tax increases. So eventually, you hope that if we get our spending under control, and that includes bonding as well, then things will right itself, and we'll be able to pay for things that, you know, we've done. But we've not made the types of changes that we need to make at the state level to correspond with the tax increases that we've made. And we're fighting a battle where people and companies are leaving. So you don't have as much to draw from, so that's the other part of the equation.
So are you hopeful that you can solve the 1.5 billion without raising taxes? Or where would you put that on a 1 to 10?
That's our goal. That's going to be our goal. I mean, the governor was out there saying, I don't want to do a tax increase this year. But, you know, he has sundry items he's going to tax.
Guns permit, raising gun permit fees.
As I always said, so.
And municipal taxes, I mean, I was at CCM, people are talking 10, 17% property tax increases. So he's definitely proposed a tax increase.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, his budget, where his goal was in his speech, was not to have any communities have a mill rate over 35, but I don't know how many, with his budget, threw people's mill rates way over that.
That didn't work for us, right?
I know. So it's our first WAC, and we've only been at it for three days since he gave his address. So, you know, there's more work to come, but we've been willing to come back as we kind of zero in on what we think's going to happen. Because this time, we're, we all have a seat at the table.
Yeah.
So it's a good thing, and we're part of the discussion. So it's not like we're waiting to hear what comes out of it.
So I do want to give credit and kudos to both our state, members of our state delegation. They have come to the Farmington Valley Collaborative. They come regularly if we ask them to give updates to the heads of the towns in the Farmington Valley, and they've been working with us. When we ask them to advocate on our behalf, they do. So you guys have been great partners, and I do want the public to be aware of that. And to Kevin's point, this is going to be a super-difficult budget season, and they're going to have to make some very, very hard choices. So I would just ask members of the, you know, our friends and neighbors to think about the position you guys are in and the difficult choices you have to make and work with you, give you suggestions.
Yeah, absolutely. That being, thank you so much. But that being said, you know, we do work for the taxpayers, so it's important that you reach out to us through our emails and calls to suggestions, come to the Capitol to testify. We'll be sharing with you key dates for appropriations hearings to testify as a town, as individuals. It's important to get as much feedback as possible. I'm getting a lot of feedback already from Simsbury residents on the hospital tax, on the gun permit, on the budget, and there's a lot of moving parts.
So we thank you for your efforts and appreciate your willingness to work with us and to work with the Board of Education and the Board of Finance. We're very appreciative.
Thank you.
We'll be back.
Yeah, I know. Thank you so much. Thanks for coming, guys. You're welcome to stay, but don't feel like you have to. We'll move on to the senior community center conceptual plan. We've got an update there. This board had asked for an update, made some suggestions and asked.
Can I interrupt you for one second to ask for an amendment?
Yes. You are brilliant.
And I apologize for my interruption.
I actually asked Cheryl to do that because I knew I was going to forget. So thank you.
I would make a motion that we...
I would make a motion that we amend our agenda to add an executive session at the end. Pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 1-200, Subsection 6, Subsection B, to discuss strategy and negotiations with respect to the Martin versus the Town of Simsbury case.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is amended to add executive session at the end of our regular agenda item. All right. Okay.
All set?
All right. We have with us Jeff Shea, Town Engineer, and...
Ray Giolito with the Northeast Collaborative Architects, who's been working on the senior center project. Jeff Shea, Town Engineer, just on behalf of the Building Committee, who could not be here tonight, just wanted to give you an update on our, oh, I'm sorry, we have some Building Committee members here. Oh, how are you? Thank you for coming. Just wanted to give you an update on our progress since our last meeting with you. We did, since meeting with the Board of Selectmen, meet with the Age and Disability Commission, with, also with the Public Building Committee in a joint meeting. And it was a very good meeting. We got some very good feedback from the Age and Disability Commission members and the public. And we did adjust our plan to hopefully address some of their comments. We also refined our cost estimates to make them consistent with the changes. So with that, I'm just going to turn it over to Ray. And he's going to give us an update on the changes to the architectural plan.
Good evening, Ray Giolito, Northeast Collaborative Architects. We've done a number of different options for the lower level of the building. A few comments that we had heard was, one, to potentially fill in the courtyard, which I know some of the members of the Selectmen mentioned at my last meeting. And then also to try to move the entrance closer to the drop-off and to increase the size of the multipurpose room. So if you see my laser pointer here, if you can, that'd be great. The addition now, as you can see, the courtyard is filled in. This is a freehand sketch. I did two of these with different options as to where the offices could go. So we could potentially move some of the offices out into the addition and part of the space that we're recreating from above the green room. And I moved the entrance further east, which is now about 20 feet away from the curb, which is about as close as we would dare to get anyway, just so that there's room for people to stand. And what it does is it increases the multipurpose room from about 1,000 square feet to almost 2,000. So that's a, that's a big advantage, I think, for increasing the size of the space for tables, for serving meals. And there's a folding partition there, a storage room, an accessible toilet. And we still end up with a small fitness room and office for the senior coordinator and a work room and social services out here. I also did a scheme where this was flipped. So as we get, as we get further into the detail of this, I think we have plenty of options here. And, and what we also were able to do is create a seating area out in the addition. And I'll show you the site plan in a minute to show you how that all works, which is quite nice. The next drawing that Jeff will bring up, just more of, more of a refresher. This, this plan hasn't changed, although the, the shape of the addition has, but we still have the auditorium and the stage and the boiler room here. And renovating the current location of offices for a health screening room, a new accessible toilet and the food pantry storage. So this floor and the second floor are consistent with what we had shown you the last time. So that second, one more floor? Yep, one more. Nope, the other way. There we go. So the second floor, of course, still has the historic meeting rooms and the light, the light and sound control booth and the balcony. The next drawing is a more formal site plan than if you recall, the last one I showed you was my own hand sketch over New Year's Eve, almost. So this is a more formal drawing done by Richter and Seegan, who is our consultant on the project. Some of the, some of the nuances that have changed here, the parking lot is still the same. We've added a stair on the south side to make it easier to get to the overflow parking to the east. We've added an enclosure here for dumpster and trash collection. We've created a very nice plaza terrace on the south side. The existing bocce court is, is basically moved a little bit east. We have a ramp, a nice gradual ramp coming out of the new exit from the lower level and a nice seating terrace with some plantings. You can see the addition, shape here has changed and right where my pointer is, is where the entrance is, and you can see how close that is to the actual drop-off. And we've created a nice terrace patio, if you will, for, again, for some gathering. And we are showing that the potential for the accessibility from Hot Meadow Street up to the main entrance, it's going, would take some work to do that, to make it look fitting for the, for the historic nature, but, but it is possible. And the other thing we were able to do is to find four parking spaces along the south side of Station Street. So even though the parking count here went from 45 to 43, we've added four here, so we're up to 47. So the, the total is actually a couple more than what I had shown you the last time. With the, with the change in the addition, we also have some 3D views of what that would look like that Jeff will bring up now. Very similar to what we had, but if you recall, the last time, this gable was more in the center. Now it's moved to the left. We've extended it out for a little covering over the, the entrance. The roof is very similar. What you can't see is the lower roof that filled in the courtyard, which I think is good. And it, it comes in just under the marble panels of the windows. If you would. This is a view from further west on Station Street. Again, very similar flavor to the architecture. And finally, there should be one from a little higher view, so you can see what it looks like. Now, we haven't adjusted this 3D to show the trees and the terraces and patios that were done in the site plan, but at least you get the idea of what the addition looks like. We also did a number of exercises on budgets. We looked at, so what would it cost if we just did accessibility upgrades? That would be moving the offices, renovating the bathrooms, making the parking lot slope properly, the proper, the parking, the drive-up, that sort of thing. So that was $1,260. And then we looked at the lower end of the cost, which was $3 million, and what could we do for that? And it, it really became a trade-off. We, we can do the accessibility upgrades and exterior repairs, you know, have a, have a budget for slate repairs, some woodwork repairs, some brick pointing that we know needs to be done. The south stair needs to be rebuilt, the exterior stair. And it, it almost comes down to, do we do the full air conditioning system or do we do the north addition? And the north addition, we'd, we would have to do with the courtyard. So it would be to do the north addition with the courtyard, kitchen renovations and some furniture, or do we do the HVAC system? So that, that was, that was a big trade-off to try to get to $3 million. The full project scope, as you can see there, everything that I've shown you is 5.3 million. That includes escalation. It includes a percentage for contingency, both design and construction, as do the other numbers. So we're, we're reasonably confident with this number. The next steps that I think we would need to do after this would be, once we get an idea as to where the project is going to go, we certainly need to go back to the State Historic Preservation Officer, because the entrance has been changed, the courtyard's been filled in. And then we would obviously need to continue to do some refinements. We are in the process of working with Department of Public Works to find out, so what are the things you guys see that happen every day that we need to know about that make your life a little miserable? We know the mechanical system, the boiler system is, is in good operating order. We know the electrical has been upgraded, but there may be some things in the building that we just can't see because we're not there every day. So they're working with, through Jeff and we're expecting to get a report from them in a week or so.
A week or so, yeah.
So, you know, we would develop a referendum package, you know, do a little bit more diligence. And then, then what we would also want to do would be to get a, an independent cost estimator to verify that, yes, this is what we can do for whatever the budget is that is decided. So that's where we are. It's a brief update.
First of all, thank you, and Building Committee and Aging and Disability Committee, for your input and work on this. Ray, you are exactly right. The comments that we got from Aging and Disability were outstanding and really helped guide the development of this and those who are using it. So we're very appreciative of that. I open it up to questions from the board.
Go ahead.
Thanks. I just, a couple of things, and I know I've, I've been at all of those meetings and we've talked about some of this, but I, I still have a concern about the drop-off circle. And after our last meeting, and I thought, you know, what you've done with the parking is certainly an improvement, but if, if it were a true half-moon, would that make more parking in the... I know way back in the beginning, we talked about, you know, an in and out on Station Street and...
Oh, yes, we can't, the, the problem is moving it west, the grade slopes up a lot in that we're a full, almost a full story at, at this door, at that entrance, you're at the first floor. So if, if you're at the lower level here, you're now about 10 to 12 feet higher here. So the more you move this driveway west, you're going to keep cutting into the grade and you will probably end up with an eight-foot retaining wall somewhere, which would be a lot. Yeah, it would be pretty awful. So we're kind of, we've kind of got it as far west as we think is appropriate for a gentle slope.
Yeah. It was just one of those things that kept coming up with, you know, drop-off flow and things like that.
Yes, I understand. I mean, in, in reality, you can, you can come through here, come out and then head west on Station.
I, I know our Aging and Disability Commissioner's here, if he's allowed to, to speak to that, but that's a...
We'll, we'll start with questions from the board.
We'll start with me, yeah. The other thing was, and I, I got a question from a member of the, I don't know if it was the Historic Society, but the repairs that you've put into the budget?
Yes.
The slates and all that, are those eligible for a State Historical Society grant for repairs for, I know sometimes when they do roofs, like for a historical church or one of those, and because this is a historical building, does it behoove us to separate those out for a separate project?
I don't know whether they're eligible. We could certainly ask. And I would say, yes, we can certainly separate them out.
It was, you know, a member of the public who asked that.
Okay.
And I thought it was a good suggestion, if, if that's a way to, you know, improve the cost profile.
I know they have grants for churches, but I'm not sure about public buildings like this.
I didn't know the answer to that. I thought maybe if you...
I know we've gotten, our new roofs, for example, at the Historical Society, we did get a grant that is administered by the Connecticut Trust. I'm not sure if municipalities are eligible for it. I think the letter of intent is due within the next month, if you intend to apply for that grant, but I can...
As I said, I thought it was a question worth asking.
I can take a look at that particular grant and see if municipalities are eligible, but it is, they're, having, managing historical structures, it's hard, there are very small, it's a short list of grants available for...
I'm sure it is. I'm literally just passing along a question.
Thank you, Elaine. If you could get back to us by our next meeting, I'm glad that was a great...
Yes, I will.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yeah, a couple. I was very pleased with the design last time, and I think what you've come back with, based on what we'd asked, is a really good faith attempt to respond to those, and I like what you have. A couple of things I would just emphasize is, similar to last time, very focused on the opportunity that the outside spaces, these small terraces, can create. I think, I think when you go through the center of town, you have quite a few places with restaurants in between parks that people can congregate, and I think it really adds a lot of value. So I don't know to what extent there's space in there, not just for sitting, but possibly tables where people can sit and possibly eat, things that would facilitate small social gatherings. And I do think we sometimes have a tendency to put too many trees in public spaces. And there are, there are some that I think are getting closed in and don't quite have the openness, the access to sunlight, that I, I think could be valued. So I just toss that out there as a consideration.
Okay, thank you.
And Ray, the second one is, could you show me the picture again of the outside of the, of the side entryway? And, and I continue to like this. I thought this was really well done last time. The only thought I have, it's a very small thing, is I think one of the things that's really majestic about Eno is the columns from experience from the front of the building. And, you know, I don't know if there's anything that can be done to reflect that a little bit more on the side. I don't know if round columns that are a little bit bigger. I know they don't, I know that doesn't fit with the squareness of the building, but I'll just toss out there as a design value, if there's something that when you come in from the side reminds you of kind of the majesty of the, of the columns on the, on the front of the building, as well as we have that in a number of other buildings in town, I think would be really nice. The Boy Scout Hall, for example.
Yes.
You have, the Funeral Home has columns. So I just throw that out there as a concept.
Appreciate it.
And I do appreciate the effort to try to respond to all the aging and disability issues, because that was really one of our critical success factors, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? I have one, Ray.
Yes.
When we're renovating the downstairs floor, the lowest level, what, for those theater groups that use the stage area, would they still have the ability to have a changing room for costume changes? Does that remain?
Interesting, because we talked about it just before this meeting. And what we discussed was, we had shown both stairs on the, on the north and the south side of the auditorium being removed to create the space that brings the dressing rooms up to the lowest level. If we kept one stair, I believe they're still here, oh, they're there. We, we talked about it and that seemed to be okay. And then they, then those groups could have access to the multipurpose room, which has a divider. There are bathrooms down there, so I think we can certainly make that work. What, what it would mean is, the stairs are approximately here and here. So if we kept one, we may lose about eight feet out of this room, but there's no magic configuration of this space yet anyway. So we'll just, you know, if we leave one of them and rework it, we'll work around it.
Okay.
And we also talked about lighting and maybe the pit that's not used anymore and that sort of thing, so I've got, got a list.
So first of all, thank you for your efforts. I really do feel you listened to what people said and what they said is reflected in the new design, so great job on that.
Thank you.
And we appreciate the thoughtfulness you've put into a very difficult design. And I think you've done a great job, given the challenge we put to you, so we appreciate that. In terms of next steps, so we will be voting on this during the budget process. I'm still putting together the Capitol project and it's going to be presented on February 27th. So our board will be considering that and then we'll take the official vote then. I think you should feel confident in a consensus from this board that we like the direction you're going on, but I'll open it up to board members if they disagree with that.
Does he need a more formal recommendation to move on with the estimators and things for budget?
I don't, yeah.
That's something we'll probably discuss with the Building Committee, in terms of what, what level of additional work we need to do to prepare for the...
So we've already referred it to the Building Committee, so that's still within their purview, but we would like, I mean, I haven't done, finished my budget, but I'm going to be proposing this, so you can, and help, and then the board will be considering it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And we appreciate all the work you put into that. Thank you very much.
Pleasure.
Moving on to the first selectmen's report. Moving on to the First Selectmen's Report, I'm just going to go through it quickly. I did, in the First Selectmen's Report, provide an additional copy of the Budget Update Letter that was sent out by me, the Chairman of the Board of Finance, and Superintendent of Schools, Matt Curtis, where we outlined what to expect from the Governor's proposal. And Mr. Hampton and Mr. Whitcoes did mention the hit to Simsbury is about $4.3 million proposed by the Governor, which is unprecedented. That is a big number, folks, and it's untenable. So we're going to be working with the three boards, the Boards of Education, Finance, and Selectmen, and with our state delegation to advocate for what's best for Simsbury. That is a, that will result, we cannot cut our way out of that. That will result in a more substantial tax increase than anyone on this board was planning on. But again, those are, as John mentioned, that's the very first step in a long budget process, so we do expect those numbers to change, but we did want to make sure that the public was aware of those initial numbers, because they are so unprecedented and so untenable. Going on from that, I'll be hosting a coffee and donuts in the First Selectmen's Office on February 24th from 9:00 to 10:00, or, you know, we can go longer, if people want to stay longer, to talk about the budget or any other issue that matters to folks. I hope you'll stop by, even if, just for a minute, to say hello. The Simsbury Recreation Department, it has online a program interest survey. If you haven't yet had a chance to take it, I ask everyone to do so, because that's how we determine what programs to offer to the community, what the community's interested in. It really only takes about five minutes. The friends of the, at the library are offering a coffee house with classical guitar music from around the world with the Monarcha Duo on February 17th at 8:00 p.m. Encourage all to attend that. I want to remind folks that with all the snow that is down, we need your help in clearing fire hydrants. Anything you can do to get that done as soon as possible will be a great help to the fire department in an emergency. Every second matters, so we do ask folks to do that, remind everyone that this board did pass an ordinance, it's now the law. So we are encouraging folks to do it. People have been posting pictures of fire hydrants that they've cleared, and I hope you'll continue to do that. That's exciting to see. If you need help with taxes coming up, AARP is available to assist seniors and others at the library. Just call the Senior Center to make an appointment. Remind folks that even though it's winter, the drought watch is still in effect statewide. We'll be monitoring that, and I see Marjorie Winters here, and will let me know when I take that out of my First Selectmen's Report, and we'll be talking about a water ordinance later in the agenda. Revaluation of real estate in Simsbury is still going on, and energy assistance is still available. I did want to let folks know that in my First Selectmen's Report, there is a link to Mr. Rabbit's, that Ms. Coe talked about, development trends in Simsbury that talks about grand list projections and population, and you can take a look at and decide for yourself whether you think those are accurate or not. Small business assistance programs are also, there's a link to that in my First Selectmen's Report. The Townwide Energy Savings Campaign for Businesses is still going on with the Clean Energy Task Force, I think, I see Mark here. That's still going on. Thank you, Mark, and your task force for doing that with Public Works. Wednesday night is Business Night at the Simsbury Library. We've got two great programs coming up. One is on March 8th, and that's going to be Business Development from the Inside Out. Relationships Drive the World. The more of the positive type that you develop with clients, prospects, and coworkers, and family, and friends, the more likely you will be successful. Talks about that. And then on March 22nd, Taking Care of Your Prime Real Estate is a hands-on program to help with organizational issues that keep you from reaching your goals. To register, you can go to the library website or contact Sarah Lawton-Slogger, who's our Business Resource Coordinator. I wanted to let folks know that the Chamber of Commerce Ninth Annual Business Leaders' Breakfast is on March 3rd, and there are two featured speakers. One is Aaron Stewart, who is the Mayor of New Britain, and Rebecca Lobo. So that should be an exciting morning. Open for business. New to Simsbury, congratulations to Dana Cosier, the new owner of Farmers Insurance. Please join us for a ribbon cutting sponsored by the Chamber on February 23rd from 4:30 to 5:30 at 522 Hal Meadow. Welcome to Simsbury. Congratulations to Lisa and Matt Nachterian, who are the new owners of the Fiddler's Green. Welcome to Simsbury. We'll be in touch with them about a ribbon cutting if they're interested. I wanted to let folks know that there was a ribbon cutting held by Main Street Partnership for K.R. Styles on February 2nd at 5:00 p.m., and we are very pleased to have them stay in Simsbury. They relocated, so thank you for staying in Simsbury. New to Simsbury, we are rescheduling Shred Fitness, because that was scheduled on one of our snow days, and the new ribbon cutting will be on February 28th at 4:00 p.m. And Benny's was scheduled for the Big Blizzard, and so that didn't happen, so we're waiting on a new date for the ribbon cutting for that. So excited about that. And with that, we will go on to action items. May I have a motion to approve tax refunds in the amount of $74,060.68?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. You have before you review of the proposed ordinance for water conservation and possibly set a public hearing date. At the Board's November 28th meeting, we received a proposal from the Conservation Commission for a water ordinance. At that time, the Board had questions and referred the proposal back to the Conservation Commission for consultation with council to address the Board's concerns. Before the Board is the revised ordinance with a memorandum from Mike Glynn, Assistant Town Planner, outlining the changes made, and we also have Town Council here to talk about the new ordinance and members of the Conservation Commission. I'll ask the Chair to introduce members of the Conservation Commission.
Good evening. Yes, Don Recker is here, the Commissioner who has been...
We're heading this, this commission, I think, this ordinance, and I think that's it, the two of us.
Okay.
So I invite Bob to come on up, and Don, do you want to join Bob and talk about the changes made?
Yep. Good evening, everyone. As you mentioned, this initial draft, this ordinance, was brought to you in November, and your recommendation was that it go back to the Conservation Commission for some revision based on the comments that you made. That has been done. The draft before you received a positive referral from the Conservation Commission. I think it was a unanimous vote.
It was.
Don and I have worked on the language. What you have in front of you is based on other municipal ordinances throughout the state, and also imported some language from the model drought ordinance that the state publishes. And I think it's in pretty good shape, ready for public hearing if you so choose. If you want, we can walk you through it, section by section, but we think it addresses the concerns that were raised by the Board of Selectmen, and also incorporates some additional language regarding power and authority from the state model. And we think it's, I think it's a well-balanced ordinance that's clearly within your authority, municipal authority to adopt.
So I'll ask members of the Board, we do have a summary of the changes made by Mr. Glynn, if you've had a chance to read them, I don't know if you want to go over them, or if you're satisfied with that, or open it up just to general questions.
I just had a question about one of the changes, and that was with regard to private wells. Would you mind just reviewing how that changed and how this ordinance applies to a private well?
I don't think private wells has changed. You have me at a disadvantage, I wasn't given a copy of Mr. Glynn's memorandum.
But we've said it all along that you may conclude that there is a water shortage applicable to the public utility water supply, and impose restrictions that you may see fit for those. It's a separate determination whether there is a state of depletion in the groundwater. And if you find that, then you may then apply restrictions on well users in addition to customers of the three water companies. That's been the same throughout.
Thank you. But maybe if, Bob, you could run through Section 157-6 regarding, hold on, let me make sure that's the one I wanted.
State of groundwater depletion.
Yes, that one, right. And how the owner of a private well would be subject to this ordinance.
Well, if you look back to the definition of state of groundwater depletion, which you have to read in tandem with the particular section, it exists when the Board of Selectmen after consultation with the Director of Public Works, Chairman of the Town Conservation Commission, and permanent Valley Health District determines that the underground water supplies, and incidentally in Simsbury, all water supplies are underground water supplies, within the town are at or are in danger of reaching levels insufficient to provide the needs of the public health, preservation, and human life, sanitation, safety, and welfare needs of those wells served within the town. So the Board of Selectmen would have to find that that state of groundwater depletion exists after consultation with the entities identified in the definition. And upon that finding, the Board of Selectmen has the authority to apply any of the prohibitions in Section 157-5 to the use of water from water wells within the town, subject to certain exceptions. The thinking here is, and incidentally, Conservation Commission has specific statutory authority to review and regulate groundwater supplies, groundwater supplies, unlike public water companies, which are regulated by PURA. And the idea is that in Simsbury, not uniquely, but perhaps unusually, all public water supplies come from underground sources, and this section of the ordinance is, gives you the power, the Board's recommend the power, if it chooses to exercise it after consultation, to employ some of the restrictions within the ordinance for water usage, even to private wells.
So all of the restrictions outlined in the earlier section are within the discretion of the Board of Selectmen to apply to a private well owner.
Yes. And there has not, there has not been...
We have to make a separate determination to apply them to private well owners as opposed to a municipal water...
Yes, that's correct.
That's what I was getting at.
Yeah, and that's been the case.
We essentially have two separate determinations to be made by the Board of Selection. So it is possible that we may impose restrictions on so-called public water users that are not imposed on a private well user.
That is correct. Based on, based on what you find after consultation with the, with the experts and the science that they share with you about the level of groundwater depletion and water shortage. It gives you the authority to do it, it doesn't compel you to do it. The other change that was made in the, in the restrictions that are outlined is, all of the actions regarding private homes are all on the exterior of the house. There's no longer any provision for that. That was an area that we looked at and decided that it was most prudent just to take those out.
And we also provided for going beyond this laundry list of suggested restrictions if, following a public hearing, if you should perceive a need to go beyond, you can have a public hearing and, and expand the...
If things get really bad and you find that, based on what you're hearing from the water companies and the other experts, you have the ability to go beyond that. There's also a section in here for exceptions and application for waiver, especially in areas of groundwater depletion. You may have an individual home or individual circumstance that needs a lot of water for health reason, and you have the ability on the ordinance to waive certain provisions of the ordinance in an individual case.
On the well question, briefly, it's interesting that the Connecticut Drought Preparedness and Response Plan focuses on this question of wells, because it notes that it's, it's particularly hard for the state to figure out what the drought situation is, locality by locality, where the system relies in whole or in part on wells. It's easy to judge a reservoir, but if you're dealing with wells, it's just hard for the state to do it. And in that plan, the writers say, in municipalities that have private wells, the ordinance should also include homeowner responsibility, because there's just a need to deal with that, kind of mysterious, a little mysterious what's going on under the ground, and we really need to look at it carefully with, with the help from the local well drillers, the help people, and so forth.
I don't disagree with you on that. I'm just concerned that there would be a perception that there's two different standards going on here for the two different water systems, essentially. And when it comes to enforcement, I mean, we're essentially asking people to, if you see your neighbor washing their car, you have to call the police and say, "My neighbor is washing his car in violation of the water ordinance." And the police are going to come out, and they're going to say, "Well, I have a well. We're not on it." So you've created a loop where there might be some confusion.
Yes, that, that's true. We could presumably arm the police beforehand with a map that showed them where the public water was and where the wells were, so they wouldn't have to go out there.
I'm not trying to put additional work on our...
Sure, I looked at this as me, as responding to one of the, what, part of what I heard is the core relative to the private wells, is individuals who didn't necessarily have a condition that warranted being regulated, being swept up in regulation. So I saw designating the two separately as really providing that protection, because in essence now, there would be no need to regulate private wells unless it was designated that there actually was a purpose for that. So I thought it responded fairly well to that, and I thought the second thing in particular for, for private homeowners was the issue of what can you regulate inside the house versus outside the house, and I think that got addressed fairly well.
Yep.
I think the issue of people calling the police and saying or reporting that someone is violating, there's always going to be scenarios with that that's going to be, you know, confusing and complicated, and, and I don't think there's any way that we completely get out of that, so.
Well, and that's why we have public hearing, but I think it's important for members of the public to understand fully what, what we're doing here before.
So it's very similar to the fire hydrant ordinance. I mean, if somebody doesn't clear your fire hydrant, a neighbor could call the police and complain, but, but people, I mean, we all try to do the right thing, and we have a great community. I'm not as worried about this, this, I mean, if there is a real emergency that requires us to do this, hopefully the whole community is going to be on board with it, because we'll be trying to preserve life at that point.
I don't disagree with you. I'm just trying to, you know, clarify what's going to happen there, so people understand when they're...
That's with any law that's passed. I mean, they could call, say, "I saw someone run a stoplight." They can report it to the police. We do, they...
But when people are going to be treated differently, you want them to understand why, and...
Yeah, and the Board could decide not to treat them differently. They could apply it to both. And it does give the discretion, but to Chris's point, you don't want to over-regulate someone who doesn't need the regulation if you don't have to.
I totally agree. Thank you.
I believe the draft is authorized and approved by the Conservation Commission is, is well-balanced. It's well within your authority. If you think about it, your primary job is the protection of public health and safety under your police power, and there's no issue that's more central to that than the preservation of public water supply or drinking water. So I think, I think my recommendation is that this is ready for public hearing and consideration by the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
If I can clarify one point, I think you folks saw the draft drought management plan. The Commission isn't recommending that for any sort of approval. We just put that together as an, as indicative of the sort of thing you might do at the time the need arose, to build the kind of staff work that should be supporting you folks as, as you deal with this issue.
So that's actually a draft. You're seeing a draft, and it's not, and not being asked to go to public hearing on that.
Right. At the time that you might need it, circumstances could be different, configuration of the town government could be different, all manner of things could need to be reflected in that, that we, we don't need to do that today.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion to set a date for a public hearing for March 13th at 6:00 p.m. on the draft water shortage ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. We have with us a motion to approve an increase to the Police Department private duty rates as recommended by the Chief of Police. Before the Board is a request from the Chief to increase private duty hourly rate charge from 75 to 100 per hour effective July 1, 2017. The request places the rate within the mid-range of other surrounding towns, and fees collected from these charges will be used to pay for police equipment, like tasers and vests and things that they need. It's a special revenue fund that we have established, so it does not, we don't raise the funds there to pay for it, we do it through the operating budget, so it's just another mechanism out there. The Chief did provide copies of comparable towns, and he is here with Captain Bolter, so I invite you to come up and speak to this issue.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening to the public as well. Glad to see so many people here today. I hope it wasn't for me. Anyways, basically, what happens in the Police Department, and we're asking for the private duty rate to go up, is, right now, the vendor who comes to, to work in the town of Simsbury pays a flat rate of $75 per hour for the officer to be assigned to the job. And right now, we're close to not being able to cover that and going in the red. We have one, and one officer basically gets $74 and, I forgot exactly, but it's 63 cents that are left over in his, his salary, so. And the way it's going to go... And the way it's going to go, the union is negotiating its contract, which will definitely step over the hourly rate for a police officer. We tried to look at other agencies that have, that are close to us, and as you notice, we are, by looking at, you have a Canton goes from 114 to 198 compared to ourselves, which are 75, along with Granby with 75. With this approval, we'll be able to continue going forward. The money that is generated by the fund will cover the benefits that arise, the paperwork that goes with it, fringe benefits, the billing sessions and collection. Basically, the last time that I approached the Board of Selectmen was in 2013 for the same thing. So, I do come before the board every three years, basically, look for an increase. The idea of the fund that the First Selectmen talked about is that we're trying to avoid the Police Department approaching the taxpayers to foot bills for, say, tasers or whatever else we purchase. We're trying to supplement that fund by using the increase in the fees.
And that's for essential equipment. It's not extra stuff.
No, it's for essential equipment.
So, I open it up to questions from the board. Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the increase in Police Department private duty rates from 75 to 100 effective July 1?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Nick.
You have before you Item D, to approve public gathering applications for 2017 events. Before the board is a request to approve the public gathering applications outlined in your packets. And I'll just read those for the public who may be interested. It's the MS Society Annual Walk on Sunday, April 23rd, the Simpac Simsbury Fleet Market, April 29th, the Simpac Mainly Marathon, Friday, May 19th, the Simsbury Triathlon, May 21st, the Tooten Hills PTO Duck Race. Cheryl, you're going to be all over that for the board.
All over that.
Okay. May 26th, the Taucup Mountain Music Festival, Fridays, June 30th to the 28th, and rain dates of July 1, 22, and 29. The Valley Car Club Show on Sunday, July 9th, the Tedeschi Trucks Band Concert on July 9th, Two Left Feet Blues Festival, August 26th and 27th, September Fest, September 8th through September 10th, the Women's Club Arts and Crafts Festival, September 16th and 17th, the Vai for the Kids Race, October 1, and the Chamber of Commerce Chili Fest, October 28th. Wow, that's some impressive stuff. Jerry, what have you got for us?
You know, all were submitted their proper application materials, and were present at that meeting. As you see, most of them are repeat events, so they, both from our standpoint as well as from the organizations, it was very straightforward. The one thing I should note, and it's in here, is that there is a, the Performing Arts Center will be serving beer and wine pending approval from zoning for a blanket beer and wine approval. So, that's pending, and obviously, they won't be able to do that until that receives final approval. But the Police Department did sign off there, but will be some events that will require extra duty officers. And most, all actually, will be required to submit certificates of insurance to the town, and many already have. So, again, I think we're very thorough, and I think they should all be great events.
Okay, I open it up to questions from the board. Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the events listed in your packet?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Jerry, why don't you stay right up there? Okay. Jerry, you had an update. There was a typo in one of them that Cheryl picked up on and that Jerry picked up on, so we'll get that corrected, because it was going to be a real deal.
Everybody's going to jump on that.
Jerry, why don't you talk us through these, these are recommended changes to the golf course and aquatic fees, as well as summer camp programs?
Thank you, Lisa. Every year, the Culture Parks and Recreation Commission reviews these fees and makes recommendations to the board for your final approval. And the process each year really starts with, and they ask us as staff for our input, they ask us to do a survey of what other towns and privately-owned enterprises, in the case of the golf course, what their rates may be, what they're looking at. And then we try and look at our own situation, what our usage has been, what we've experienced, what we look at as far as our cost increases that we may be experiencing, and then with that, the recommendations are made. In the case of the golf course fees, quite a bit of discussion took place about that, and I think, as you can see, most of the rates were recommended to be left alone. And I think the reason for that is a couple of things. One, I think the Commission looked back, if you look back at the last four or five years to where we are now, there have been pretty good increases, year after year. And I think we're still in the position where we are trying to attract new play, we are trying to get people up for the first time, and with many of the improvements that we've made, we feel very confident. If we get people up there, they will come back. And we feel that's really going to be, you know, where we need to focus, how we're going to generate more revenue. And so, that being, I would say, was really the focus of the discussion. There were a couple of areas where I think the Commission felt that, you know, there was room to go up, but by and large, I think they wanted to hold the fees where they were. You should note also, it was two years ago that the equipment surcharge was put in, in lieu of golf course equipment coming through the capital nonrecurring program. So, it was a pretty healthy increase then, that we asked those folks to absorb, and I think their feeling was that this was a pretty responsible action to take.
So, I open it up to questions from the board. Jerry, could you just speak to, one of the things the Culture Parks and Rec was contemplating was offering an additional open swim from 12.
On the swim, yeah. I will, in that area, and again, there were, one of the things that I think we focused on, on the pool fees, was we felt, you know, looking at our neighbors and other municipalities, where we were very competitive, probably on the high side, and we've experienced some increases over the last few years. But one of the things that we really encourage people is to purchase season passes in advance. And that's why we have a staggered, you know, two-tiered schedule prior to June 1, after June 1. And we really, that's to encourage people to come in early, get it done, easier for us administratively, easier for our staff, once the season starts. So, to further incentivize that, we restructure our schedule a bit and compressed the morning instructional program, and created an extra hour of the public swim, with the expectation or with the proposal that that would be for season pass holders only. So, hopefully, it might incentivize people to, you know, to purchase a pass. They certainly, you know, that's the way we would hope it would go. We're not cutting back on anything that the public had before. We really created another hour. There wouldn't be any other programs in their camps, so it wouldn't be coming in or anything like that. So, you know, again, it was something we hope is an incentive that people might, you know, might take advantage of.
Yes, Cheryl.
Jerry, there was some talk along those lines of making that extra time available to adults only, so to have an open swim where there was adults only involved.
That wasn't part of the proposal. It was really for any season pass holder, so families, anybody, yeah, anybody could come in.
I know the seniors came in and were very concerned about the time available for-
If they're pass holders, they would be included in that group. It just wouldn't be, you know, for seniors or adults only. And I think we've done a pretty good job of making, you know, quite a bit of time available to those folks and to lap swim and some of the other programs that we have, and, you know, to different parts of the day. So, I think we've accommodated them, and they certainly would be, you know, have the ability to utilize this as well as anyone else.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jerry? First of all, thank you to the Culture Parks and Rec Commission. Please extend our thanks and our condolences to Mr. Bush, who's suffered a loss in his family. May I have a motion to approve the 2017 Simsbury Farms facility and camp fee recommendations as listed in your packets?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Chris. Chris. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. Oh, Jerry, why don't you just say? We are moving on to Item F, which is to refer the donation of playground equipment from the Simsbury Volunteer Fire Company with our thanks for the Rotary Park to the Planning Commission pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 8-24 and to other land use commissions, and also to the Culture Parks and Recreation Commission. Don't worry, you don't have to go to all of them, but the referrals do have to go forward. So, with that, welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Chris DeVado, who is our Fire Company President. He manages the day-to-day for the Fire Company itself, the volunteers, and he is actually the lead on this project to get this completed. Certainly, it's a pleasure for us to make this donation to the community. We think it's a neat project. It's actually in concert with something that's very exciting that's going to be happening in 2019, which will be our 75th anniversary of incorporation for the Fire District and the Fire Company. So, it'll be 75 years. So, this is going to be the lead event, which we hope to have it in place this spring, perhaps. We, the Fire Company themselves, are going to fund it. As you see in your notes, the cost of the prop is actually $21,000. It is a high-grade playscape product. It's not, it's consistent with what's down there, and which is very well-received right now. And again, it's a fire truck, so it's not going to be on. So, we're very excited about it. The other item, too, we're very excited about, too, is the fact that the Fire Company membership is going to build it. It's our project. We have a contractor lined up that's volunteering his time, who happens to be a volunteer firefighter, who is going to do a lot of the digging and site work, in coordination with Jerry, under their supervision. And we've placed it in a location that it is, we think, the best spot for it, which will enhance the actual park. And also, we've talked with an edge here, I'm glad, and he is the current president of the Rotary, so we're very excited to make this part of the Rotary Park. I'm not sure if you've got a copy of this. This is the map of where it's going to be located.
Thank you. First of all, thank you. It's very kind of you to support the community in this way.
Thanks, Chris.
I open it up to Jerry. You want to have any comments?
No, just, you know, we've had many discussions over, you know, over the past year on this, and we really look forward to it. I think it'll be very well-received, and just a great addition to an already, you know, really great area. And so, we look forward to working, you know, with these guys and getting that coordinated. We're going to be, hopefully, have some improvements down there going forward as well. So, I think all of it is, you know, the timing is good, and we look forward to working with you.
All right, thank you. And your board will take a vote on it, but your board is aware of it, and Chief Kevin does not need to go there for that. You can handle that on your level.
No, they will formally vote on it next Thursday night, if they're next week.
Okay. And you'll coordinate with Jamie Rabid on the other land use-
Yep, I have. And quite frankly, your staff has been great in trying to get us through all the nuances of the planning and zoning and wetlands and design review and all that.
Yeah, who knew, right?
I didn't. But I do now, and we'll do what we need to do.
Well, we are very appreciative. I think it's, I mean, it looks wonderful, very exciting to have this, and thank you and the entire department for your efforts on this and for making our community-
I'll pass that forward back.
Lisa, can I ask one question?
Yes, of course.
Kevin, how are you going to deal with all the upset kids because their fathers won't let them play on it? Because they're going to be playing on it?
Yeah, it is designed for two to five, but I'm certain that you might get some older-
You will.
Yeah, anybody who's ever been to a touch-a-truck knows exactly what it's going to be like, so.
Yeah. You know, it's interesting, we do occasionally bring a truck down there on the way back from a call, and that's really what started the whole thing, because the kids, right away, they leave the playground and they come out to the truck. So, it's a neat thing. And we'll stop doing that, but this certainly will be part of the anniversary edition. For, as you see, it'll be, I don't know if on that one, or on this one, it's engine 75, which replicates the 75 years, so it's kind of a neat thing.
It's really great, yeah.
That's nice.
So, this one, you'll remember on the capital improvement plan from last year, there were improvements scheduled to be made at the Rotary Parks of this board. We'll be considering those as well, and it makes sense to do them all at the same time if this board approves that project. But that should come up for a vote during our budget process as well. So, with that, may I have a motion to refer the donation of playground equipment from the Simsbury Volunteer Fire Company for Rotary Park to the Planning Commission pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 8-24 and to other land use commissions, and also to the Culture Parks and Recreation Commission?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You can leave the pictures.
I know, there are like lots of pictures.
I'm in need of all those other boards and commissioners.
Next, before us is to approve the Board of Education contracts with the Simsbury Education Association, SEA, and the Simsbury School Administrators and Supervisors Association, SSA. Both collective bargaining agreement contracts before you were negotiated under the timelines and provisions of the State of Connecticut Teacher Negotiation Act. It's a very formal process with not a lot of flexibility. The contracts have been filed with the Town Clerk and the Commissioner of Education, and the Town Clerk has given public notice of receipt of the agreements. That notice was published online in the Hartford Current in February, on February 1. The filing date with the Town Clerk was on February, oops, I don't have the date when it was published in the Current, but it was published in the Current. And the filing date with the Town Clerk was on February 1. The terms of the agreement are binding on the legislative body, which is the Board of Selectmen for the town of Simsbury, unless this board rejects the contracts at a special or regular meeting within 30 days of the filing, which again, was February 1. No vote to approve is necessary. I want to recognize and thank those members of the Board of Education who worked on the contract, Mike Goman, Tom Doran, Todd Burke, Jeff Tindall, and counsel from Shipman &amp; Goodman, and of course, we've got Neil Sullivan here and Burke Leclair, who also worked on it. Is there anyone else I'm missing, guys?
Mr. Wilson.
All right, so I'll invite whoever. I guess we've got Mike Goman coming up to talk to us a little bit about.
You've got me.
And first of all, thank you for your efforts, and thank you to our teachers who work very hard and do a great job for this community, and they certainly have provided excellence in education. We would not be where we are without our teachers. So, Mike, with that.
That's right. Thank you very much for that introduction. My name is Mike Goman, 45 Old Stone Crossing, West Simsbury. I'm also Vice Chair of the Board of Education, and I've been the Chair of the Personnel and Negotiations Committee for my entire tenure on the Board of Ed, which is going on 16 years, I think, now. I wasn't paying attention when Rich Hogan decided I would make a good Chair of the Personnel and Negotiations Committee, and I haven't been to give the job to anyone else since. So, this is now my fifth go-around in these contract negotiations. They happen every three years. As you observed or pointed out, it's a very regulated process, very scripted process by state regulation. We have to follow a series of events. We have to file a series of documents, follow a series of dates, and a very tight schedule to get everything done. It takes up a lot of time. In negotiation years, we'll add somewhere between 20 and 40 additional meetings to our Board of Ed meeting schedule, so depending on how things are going. And again, as you pointed out, there are two contract groups that we're talking about here, the SEA, which is the Teachers Association, and the School Administrators and Supervisors Association. We do them kind of on a parallel path in that year. A lot of meetings. The schedule starts with sort of information and planning sessions in June. We file our first notices on this to notify everyone, including the Board of Finance, that we're going to start negotiations. We do that in July. We start discussions with the two bargaining groups in August. We have to agree on rules and regulations, so to speak, for how we're going to conduct the negotiations and sign that document, get that done. We begin negotiations really in September, and that's a process of, you know, us putting proposals forward for contract changes, and they can be language, compensation, all, you know, benefits and so on. And the other side, whether it's the administrators or the teachers, they'll put their proposals together and submit those to us. We respond formally, they're done in writing, we respond in writing, and we get together pretty much on a weekly basis through September and try to work out a lot of the more administrative issues, I guess I would call them, during September. As you might expect, in this process, ultimately comes down to compensation issues. A lot of the things that we talk in the first five or, talk about in the first five or six weeks are really- issues, I guess I would call them, during September. As you might expect, in this process, ultimately comes down to compensation issues. A lot of the things that we talk in the first five or, talk about in the first five or six weeks are really more language issues. But by early October, typically, we're into mediation at that point. With respect to the administrators, we, that's a little easier process, as you might expect. With the teachers, it's a little more lengthy. It involves a much bigger group of people, a more diverse group of people. But we're into mediation, so the way that goes is we start at 5:00 in the afternoon, and the two parties sit in separate rooms. A mediator works with each group, conveys our groups, in my example, conveys our proposals or positions over to the other group, gets their responses, and any new proposals they have, brings them back down. So the mediator spends the evening shuttling back and forth. An early evening in that session, and I'll point out that Chris Kelly had the honor of being a member of the Personnel and Negotiations Committee when he was on the Board of Ed. But an early evening during mediation ends at about 11:00. So we start at 5:00, and if we get out of there by 11:00, we count that an early night. So, and that goes on for several weeks. The culmination usually is the last night. In the five sessions that I've chaired as chair of the Personnel and Negotiations Committee, the last session typically would end anywhere between 2:00 a.m. and 4:00 a.m. the next day. So we started at 5:00 in the afternoon. Typically, we find we've got to an agreement around 2:00 a.m. We have to memorialize that agreement, in other words, put it in writing, get both sides to sign it while everybody's still fresh on the terms of the agreement. And if we get out of there by 4:00 a.m. the next day, it's a success. This time around, I'm pleased to report that largely as a result of the work done by Burke Leclair, our business manager, and Neil Sullivan, our director of personnel, a lot of the issues that typically would take us until the wee hours of the morning got worked out. A lot of the questions got answered, a lot of the topics that needed to get discussed got discussed, and in fact, we were able to get out of there, I think, around 11:00 this time, so it wasn't a 4:00 a.m. morning, thank heavens. So, in any event, the settlements, let's just talk about those for a minute, and, you know, these are lengthy contracts, they involve a lot of language, but the, at the end of the day, the important stuff is the compensation. The SEA settlements on the general wage increase for the years starting in June of this year, the three-year period, first year is 1.66%, 1.66%, next is 1.69%, and the last is 1.85%. And that's the general wage increase. For the administrators, it's 2.4%, 2.4%, and 2.3%. Now, general wage increase applies, and I'll use the teachers, just for my example, general wage increase applies to people who have generally got more than 11 or 12 years of teaching experience. They're called, in our terminology, off-step. If you are a younger teacher, if you're below that threshold, you get an increase for each year of seniorities, and we call that step. So as you're moving up on step, you get an increase to reflect your increased seniority until you're, say, 12 years out, and then after that, you don't get a step increase any longer, you just get the general wage increase. The step, the percentage of people on step is, and Burke or Neil may want to correct me, but it's about 30%, I think.
Exactly.
Of the total of our teachers association. So about a third, roughly, a little less than a third, are still on step, so they get a combination of a step increase and the general wage increase. But then at their 11th or 12th year, they just go to GWI, and that's those numbers that I gave you a few minutes ago. In addition to that, we were able to negotiate, successfully negotiate, to increase benefit contributions slightly in each group. And of course, as we always do, we work on contract language. We work very, very hard to keep our contracts with these bargaining groups as simple and as clear and clean as possible. If you look at our contracts versus the contracts for a lot of other districts, ours are very, very small, very short, very straightforward. You can get into all kinds of language about how decisions get made to handle things like reduction in force and sabbaticals and reimbursement for additional education and so on. We've managed, with the help of our professional staff, to really minimize that kind of language. And my goal throughout the period has been to both keep the language simple and to keep our contract language flexible, so that as things change, and we know we're in a period of time of declining enrollment, that the board and the professional staff have the flexibility to manage the workforce properly, efficiently. So now, I should point out, and I should have pointed this out at the beginning, when I took the job, I made it a condition with Rich Hogan at the time, who was chair at the time, that we would have professional counsel. You know, I negotiate a lot of things in my line of work, but I never negotiated with teachers associations before. So we made the decision as a board to interview different legal counsel, all of whom had extensive experience in negotiating these kinds of contracts, a lot of experience writing them. And at that time, we picked Shipman &amp; Goodman, the attorney is Tom Mooney. Tom's been with us ever since then. He literally wrote the book on Connecticut school law. If you look at that book, that's him, the author of it. He knows this stuff cold, and I would say he negotiates about 40% of the contracts with these associations in the state. So all through that process I described a few minutes ago, we have Tom Mooney at our side, giving us good counsel and giving us good current data. So the results, I mentioned the GWI. You know, one of the things we like to look at is, well, where do we stand on per pupil spending? Where do our salaries stand relative to the salary schedule in the towns that are in our reference group or in District Reference Group B? So let me just give you a couple of data points there. On a per-pupil spending basis, we're, out of the 169 towns, we're ranked 97th, so sort of in the middle of where they would be. We're below the state average in that regard, and we're also slightly below the District Reference Group average. From a salary rank standpoint in DIRD-B, and DIRD-B's, there are 21 towns in DIRD-B, District Reference Group B, we look at the maximum salaries for BA, people accredited with BAs, bachelor's degrees, master's degrees, and sixth year if they're working towards their doctorate degree. And just to give you a couple of quick numbers, in the 21 towns, on the BA maximum, our salary rank is 20th out of the 21 towns. On masters, we're 19th out of the 21 towns, and on the sixth year, we're 14th out of the 21 towns. Also, we look at competitive salaries in Avon and Farmington, because a lot of times we're out there in the market trying to hire people, we want to know how competitive we are in terms of being able to hire people. And we're slightly below both Avon and Farmington on our max BA, MA, and sixth year again. Just, we've actually been trying to close that gap to maintain our competitiveness. So, you know, it's not something that we want to brag about, that we're 19th or 20th out of 21st particularly, but, you know, I will say that even though we are on the lower end of our DIRD-B salary scales, we're a great place to work. Again, thanks to our superintendent and the professional staff we have, and the support from the taxpayers and the money that's been invested in our schools over the years, it's a good district to work in, and that helps us balance out against competitive salaries. So I think that sort of covers it. As the first selectwoman mentioned, there's no action required. If you were to reject it, it would put us into arbitration, but we're happy to be here tonight to present this for your review, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
No, I don't think so. I think you're okay. Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
I'll open it up to questions. Any questions for the members of the board?
Nothing clearer room faster than a teacher's contract.
I did want to let folks know that if people want to see the numbers, you went through a lot of numbers, but they do list, GWI means general wage increase, and step or incrementum movement is the second, and then there's a total number for that, for the teachers and also for the administrators, and that is in the packets. It was also noticed in the papers, and so anyone, other than read them all, unless people have questions on those, they are in the packets, and we can do that, and anyone, member of the public can look them up.
Right, absolutely.
And do you publish those on your website?
Are the contracts?
Contracts themselves are on the website. So right now, the contract that expires on June 30th is up there. Come July 1st, this contract will go up on the website.
It is all public information, though. If anyone has any questions, they can contact Burke or Neil or me.
And the information that you just gave us tonight is published on the town's website, so if anyone does want to take a look at what
That's correct.
the Board of Ed gave us, it's easy enough to do online. And again, hard copies, they are certainly available if you would like them through the Board of Education.
So, Mike, do you have those rankings that you gave us, the 20th out of 21st and all that?
Yeah. I brought some sheets in case you asked.
Sometimes we get these questions from the public, and it's nice to have an answer.
What this is, on this side is kind of where we stood before negotiations. This was a document we shared with the Board of Finance last summer. And then on this side is kind of the after-negotiations comparison to Avon-Farmington that we talked about.
Yeah, I think that's important information for people.
Yeah, we agree.
Thank you.
And Mike, I just want to add two things. You know, you talk about, you know, mediation, but you don't have to go to arbitration, and I think that's a real win-win. You talked about, and I know this has traditionally been the case, very attractive benchmarking compared to other communities in terms of where our salaries and per pupil is, but at the same time, the actual wage increases benchmark really well compared to other contracts. I didn't get to see a lot of them, but I looked at a few, and it validated that, as well as what you're seeing in the private sector. So I think to have contracts that really do a good job benchmarking, leave staff feeling satisfied with what they're getting, feeling that you did something well on behalf of the town from an efficiency point of view outside of arbitration, to me, is a real win-win. So I just wanted to point that out.
Good, thank you.
Because I think these contracts really reflect outstanding work done on behalf of the negotiating process.
And I do want you to echo that. Cost of arbitration is actually, would probably negate any savings you might get in a change in the contract, so.
That's correct.
It is worth pointing that out. So thank you to everyone who participated, our unions as well, because we know it's a partnership there, and very appreciative. No action is needed. These will become binding contracts, I think, March 1, if my math is right. Is that right?
That's correct.
Well, February's only got 28 days.
28.
Oh, right.
So probably March 3.
Okay, there you go. Thank you for all of your time, Mike.
It's a lot of time as a volunteer, and we appreciate that.
Appreciate that.
Thanks for coming.
Take care, Mike.
You guys don't have to leave. You can stay until tomorrow if you need to.
I always came for another meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. You have, we're on to item H, which is a nonprofit request for Eno fee waiver from the Theater Guild of Simsbury. Before the board is a request to waive fees for the Theater Guild of Simsbury Spring Show Bedtime Stories. Excited to see that. The dates they are requesting are April 22nd, 23rd, 28th, 29th, and 30th. The Theater Guild of Simsbury requests the payment be limited to custodial fees for that period rented. Any questions? We do have a representative from the Theater Guild. Donna Senad is here today. So if there are questions for the Theater Guild, please let us know. All right, with that, may I have a motion to waive the fees for the use of Eno for the Theater Guild of Simsbury on April 22nd, 23rd, 28th, 29th, and 30th, excluding custodial fees?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
This may be an item we want to bring back to the board in terms of a policy, whether these types of things that we approve every year need to come to us, or whether we could just set a policy and let that be an administrative approval through the person who manages the buildings, who happens to be here, Mr. Roy. So that is something that's more, may wish to consider in the future. All right, we had a motion, we had a second. Have we taken the vote?
Didn't.
Did we take the vote?
Did we take the vote?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
It's getting to be that time of night.
That's not, never good when that happens. All right. We are now going on to amendments of the Towns of Simsbury Retirement Plans to reflect negotiated changes for dispatchers. As you recall, we approved the settlement of the Dispatchers Union. On January 3, the Town of Simsbury and United UE Local 222 CILU/CIPU Local 41, representing the town's dispatchers, executed a revised collective bargaining agreement previously ratified by members of the union and the town. That contract included changes in the provisions of the retirement income plan and the administrative procedures to the defined contribution plan, including the closure of the retirement income plan to any employees hired for the position of dispatcher on or after January 3, 2017, and an amendment of the defined contribution plan and its administrative procedure regarding eligible employees and contributions to reflect the new terms for these employees. The attached resolutions are essentially cleanup and administrative follow-up to the settlement of those contracts. But I have Mr. Cook here, if you want to add any more to that.
You stated it perfectly.
You have before you motions, so we're going to need two motions. One, to waive the reading of the motions unless somebody wants to read them. And then
So moved.
Do we have a motion to waive the reading of the resolutions? Do we have a second?
A second.
We'll go with Elaine on that. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have waived the reading of the resolutions, although they are in our packets if any members of the public wants to see that. Tom, would you like two separate motions?
This place.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the closure of the retirement income plan to any employees hired for the position of dispatcher on or after January 3, 2017? Does that suffice as a motion?
If you, the front of the submission, the motions are pretty well spelled out there in number one.
I'm reading the wrong thing, sorry. May I have a motion to adopt the attached resolution authorizing the amendment of the Town of Simsbury Retirement Income Plan to reflect changes to the plan negotiated by the Town of Simsbury and UE Local 222 CILU/CIPU Local 41.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. May I have a motion to adopt the attached resolution authorizing the amendment of the administrative procedure regarding eligible employees and contributions appended to the defined contribution plan of the Town of Simsbury to reflect the changes to the plan negotiated by the Town of Simsbury and UE Local 222 CILU/CIPU Local 41.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Before you is item J, Small Cities Program Application. This is a request coming to you from the Housing Authority, and we have Ed LaMontaigne, Executive Director of the Housing Authority, here with us, to authorize the first selectman to sign and submit an intent-to-apply form for a Small Cities Grant and to set a public hearing for March 13, 2017, at 6:00 p.m., to solicit citizen input on the proposed application for a Small Cities Grant of $800,000 for renovations at Virginia Connolly Residence and the Dr. O. and L. Murphy Apartment Complex. Ed, would you like to speak to this?
Sure. Well, this year, Phase 2, as you know, we are completing the Small Cities Grant that we applied for back in 2015. This grant is to, Phase 2 of the roadway work in Virginia Connolly Residence, to make it more accessible for disabled individuals. Two other things, we are also applying for a new generator. As you know, the town, I mean, the Virginia Connolly is a secondary shelter for the town. Our generator is beyond its useful life by about five years. The other thing that is beyond its useful life besides myself is our underground storage tank, we are coming up on, that will be beyond its useful life in 2017. So we are applying for a new underground storage tank for Virginia Connolly as well. And the only other thing that we are going to be doing up at the Murphy Apartments is to apply for monies to install new storm doors on each of the 70 units of housing. So essentially, we're asking to install 140 storm doors on each of the apartments.
Thank you for your efforts, and to Mr. Cook, who is working with Mr. Wagner, Mr. LaMontaigne, and will be working with multiple staff. Small city grants are a lot of work on the town's part, and so we're very appreciative of staff and very happy to be speaking.
As am I. Just wanted to mention that, and Tom always does a great job with that. I want to thank the staff for their assistance in this grant.
Well, you're welcome. We're very pleased to assist you. It's a good cause. Are there any questions? May I have a motion to authorize the first selectman to sign and submit an intent-to-apply form for a Small Cities Grant and to set a public hearing for March 13, 2017, at 6:00 p.m., to solicit citizen input on the proposed application for a Small Cities Grant of $800,000 for renovations at the Virginia Connolly Residence and the Dr. O. and L. Murphy Apartment Complex.[1754.33]
So moved.
Second. Was that you?
Yes.
You're the second.
Sorry.
Any further discussion?
I have one discussion. Is that, we just put two public hearings on the same day? We're good with that?
Unless it is immediately following the...
Okay.
We've done that in the past.
Just checking.
Good catch, for this hour.
And we may actually list this one first, because I, we have not had a lot of public input on that one, so that, although I know you enjoy staying for the whole time.
I do, I really do.
So we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
You have before you, a motion to approve a resolution for 100% CT, a Clean Energy Concept Program, that was designed by our own, very own Clean Energy Task Force. Very interesting target for the Town to set, and we're excited to hear about it. And I invite Tom Roy and Mark Scully to tell us a little bit about the proposal and what it means. And I do want to recognize the Clean Energy Task Force and working with the Town of West Hartford. I think they've been leading this across the state, so it's an exciting project and appreciate the leadership of our volunteers on these boards.
Well, I think Mark is really, really one who's, is a proud candidate on this, and all the work that the Clean Energy Task Force does, I'm always excited about the work they do and what it means. Tonight's presentation, I'm just going to steal a little of Mark's thunder, needs to be kept in context with what this is. The best way to describe it is this is the concept car of the future. This is what electricity and energy use could look like in 30 to 35 years. But by studying it and looking at it now, it gives you the opportunity to learn and see and hopefully advance things that the fashion base would otherwise. So, Mark, jump in.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Tom, for that introduction. Mark Scully, 29, Notch Road, West Simsbury, and as you said, representing the Clean Energy Task Force. We're really excited to have this opportunity to present this project to you. You will have a copy of these slides afterwards. And as Tom said, this is a project, it's really, it's a concept project, and what we did at the Clean Energy Task Force, we stepped back from the daily struggles or the daily issues of this solar panel array on the school and this one over the landfill and said, let's look forward a little, let's look ahead. And if we tried to be more ambitious and said, we want to get to a real utopian level of 100% of our energy coming from renewables, could we do it? Where would we find obstacles? Let's do math. So that's really what we did. I would point out that the definition of 100% renewable is a little different than you might hear sometimes in the press. You'll hear some towns and cities say, we're 100% renewable, and what that often means is that they're either generating enough electricity or, and sometimes they're just buying it or they're buying offsets, and they're saying, we're therefore 100% renewable. Ours really is a more holistic approach to not just generating the electricity, but dealing with the intermittency of renewables. How does the grid need to change so that we can accommodate all the renewables? So it's a much more, really complete project. We've been working on this project about a year, so we're very thrilled to present this to you. There are four pillars or four key steps in the project. The first is, let's take stock. Let's benchmark our current energy use, and that is the whole town. It's not just the town of Simsbury Municipal Buildings, it's residences, it's businesses, and it's everything. Electricity, heating, cooling, transportation. Second, before we start to look at how much we can produce in renewables, let's see how we can reduce our need. So we look at, the timeframe here is sort of out to 2050. What kind of changes could we make with very aggressive adoption of deep energy retrofits? Switching, what they call fuel switching, switching our heating and cooling over to efficient heat pumps, much more modern net zero design of construction, switching our transportation over to electric. So fairly ambitious, using all the technology that does exist today, how much could we reduce our demand? And then third, and this is a key part of the project, really going through, looking at the town, how much could we produce, how much renewable energy could we produce in town? In Simsbury, that's primarily solar photovoltaics. Solar panels are produced with electricity. We don't have a good wind resource, we don't have a lot of high grow here, so it's really going to be solar panels. So we literally went rooftop by rooftop and said, parking lot by parking, and said, how much could we fit in town? That was a big part of the project. Could we even get close? Could we do it? And then finally, as I said, the grid would need to change. We can't just keep adding solar, we can't just keep adding intermittent renewables to the grid as it's currently designed. So we're working collaboratively with Eversource to look at how that grid would need to be designed. So as I said, we start by benchmarking our current energy usage. We got our electricity data from Eversource, we got our natural gas data from Connecticut Natural Gas. We got a list of buildings from the assessor, and we looked at how many of those buildings use heating oil. We made some assumptions about how much, how many gallons of heating oil are burned a year. We got a list of vehicles in town, we made some assumptions about how many, how many miles are driven per year, miles per gallon. We converted everything to a common currency, gigawatt hours, and then added it all together. And you can see now, while the total may not mean a lot to you, the distribution was kind of surprising and quite an education for us, that about 40% of our energy right now comes from transportation, about 40% from heating, if you put together natural gas and oil, and about 20% from electricity. And the presentation that you'll have and will be available to the public is, has got some of the details in there. Next step, as I said, is how much could we reduce that by, if we really got serious about conservation and efficiency using technology that is currently available? Things like energy-efficient appliances and light bulbs, modern building, and not just for new construction, because that's less of an issue going forward than the energy retrofits that we can do, switching over vehicles to electric vehicles. And you can see from the numbers here, there is potential for significant savings in our energy. Really about a two-thirds reduction from about 934 gigawatt hours down to 325. I'm not going to say these are the exact right numbers, a lot of assumptions made in here, this is a work in progress. It's a concept car, as Tom said. These numbers will change as we get better estimates, as we get better at doing this, but it is our first estimate, first honest estimate, how much we could reduce the energy that we currently consume. Then, as I said, the third stage was, how much could we produce in town? And so we had a summer intern using a tool called helioscope, which is what a solar installer would use to get, to produce a quote for a company or a residence. The picture in the upper right is the Stop &amp; Shop Hoyt's complex. The other two pictures are not in town, but they're representative of what we could do when we start using parking lots also for solar or some undeveloped land. So this was also, a lot of assumptions went into this work, but we did our first estimate. Again, we went through the building list, there's 9,395 buildings we looked at, we divided them into categories. We made, we didn't model each house, we made a lot of assumptions there, but we did model all of the large commercial buildings. And we looked at parking lots, we actually modeled a few parking lots, we made some estimates of what other potential lots could be available. And then we had some very rough estimates of what pieces of land, how much potential there might be in land to, in town to put some solar on some land. The number we came up with in our first estimate is 118 gigawatt hours of annual production, which is about a third of what we're going to need. So the other two-thirds, we would look to get from regional renewable sources, so utility scale, solar, offshore, wind from Connecticut. So this was, as I say, it's been an educational process to get a rough estimate of how much we could produce in town. So this graph sort of puts it all together. The bars on the left build up from our current consumption, electricity, gas, oil, transport, getting to that 934 of our current consumption. And we work our way down from there with these efficiency measures, through electricity, heating, transport, getting to that 325. Then we figure we can produce about a third of that, 118 locally, and the rest comes from regional. So as I say, this is, these are first estimates. The last step of the process is we need to look at the grid, because the grid as it's currently designed is set up for big central power plants. They could be coal, they could be natural gas, it could be nuclear, sending electricity in one direction out to businesses, to residences. And increasingly, in the future, that model is changing, because we now have what we call prosumers, people who produce and consume. They've got solar on the rooftop, you've got businesses producing solar, you've got much more distributed generation of electricity, it's intermittent. You've got storage, you've got combined heat and power, you've got fuel cells. So there needs to be multi-directional flows of electricity. We need to deal with the intermittency issue, we need some form of storage. Demand response is a way of not treating how much we use as a fixed amount, but as peak hours and peak rates of electricity change, we might shift some of the loads. We do our washing and drying at night, or in fact, businesses could shut down certain lines of their production when, or we could shift pumping of water to times when the, when the rates are lower. So this is a key part of the project, and we're working very closely with Eversource and a nonprofit called Clean Coalition. They've got expertise in this area of how to design the grid, how to rethink the grid. So we, our goal is to work with Eversource to devise some kind of a pilot project for what would be called a community microgrid. So as Tom said, this is a concept car, this is a sort of forward-thinking project. We're not talking right now about specific policies or technologies, but some ways that as we progress, as the, as the project moves forward, that we might, you might be hearing from us, we've outlined a few here. We're already starting to see some pathways, some technologies, some, and some obstacles in the way. A goal of the project is, maybe by mapping out the big picture and how we might get there, we might actually see some solutions that we can't see right now. And we might actually be motivated to actually doing it, if we think it's possible. So as I said, we're working with Eversource to develop a pilot microgrid. As the Clean Energy Task Force has done, we will continue to do programs that promote and educate on things like renewable energy, heat pumps, energy-efficient retrofits, commercial, as you mentioned, we have a small business energy program going on now. Shared solar, as you know, we have a proposal for a shared solar facility on the landfill. That's a part of, a part of the solution. At some point, we might start to talk about electric vehicle charging infrastructure in town. One of the key ways that we're using this project now is some of the aspirational goals of this project, we'd like to build into our Plan of Conservation Development, which is being updated. So as you mentioned, Lisa, the project really came out of the Simsbury Clean Energy Task Force. We've been working with West Hartford, and we've got other towns expressing interest in starting to do this type of work. We've had several partners, we're actually working through the nonprofit People's Action for Clean Energy. Acadia Center is a policy house, with offices in Hartford. Clean Water Action is helping disseminate to other towns. We've had students from Yale. This Clean Coalition I mentioned has the expertise in the, in the grid. The Institute for Sustainable Energy at Eastern Connecticut State has a sustainable communities program, and they're building some of our work into their, into the energy module there. So we're excited about the work, and one of the reasons we're here with this resolution is that Eversource, in order to keep going with Eversource, they'd sort of like to know that it's not just a couple of people on the Clean Energy Task Force, but that the Town is aware about this. So we welcome the chance to entertain any of your questions.
Let me answer the question before they ask the first question. Any commitments made tonight, zero impact on the budget? This is simply saying that we support the direction that they're going.
We read our minds.
You know, that would be pretty obvious, but...
I have a copy of Mark's presentation here as well as a draft, assuming that he was forward with this.
Thank you. First of all, wow, that was a great presentation. And also, the inventorying of the town was a lot of work, and appreciate Tom, the intern, and the task force working together, and that's a great first step in sort of inventorying where we are and what we can do. And it's very exciting to think that there might be a path going forward, and I'm excited to support you in this, because I think this is great work by the task force and by the public works. And thanks to West Hartford as well, who's working with you.
All right.
Questions from the board?
I would echo, it's overwhelming almost in terms of trying to absorb it, so really great work. Mark, I really like the idea of integrating this into the Plan of Conservation Development, because so much lives from that document that I think it's just a great way of carrying it forward.
They're both very aspirational. It's not a detailed, policy, technical document.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks.
So could you just explain a little bit more? When you say a pilot microgrid with Eversource, just a little bit, I completely missed what that meant.
I assume it's an infrastructure component with them, but could you say a little bit more about that?
Right. Now, you have a rough sketch of one on, it's in the appendix, it's page 18, I think it's the very last page, but the idea is that within our town, and Tom, you may want to, you might want to supplement what I'm saying here, but we'll take one of our, one of our substations, and instead of power just coming from a central source, from Eversource and then supplying us, we'd actually manage that, the circuits that are at that substation as a separate grid. So we'd have some critical facilities on there. We'll have solar generation, we'll have a bunch of rooftops, we may have some parking canopies, so we'll actually be producing energy locally. We may have some generators or storage, and we'll, we'll have probably tiers of users. As I say, we'll have some critical, with the police station, we'll have a gas station, we'll have some medical facilities. And the idea is that we're managing the flows in different directions on that grid. Potentially, we could, what they call island, so if we lost power entirely, we could actually operate at least portions of that microgrid as a self-standing, self-sufficient facility during longer storms. So resiliency is one of the nice benefits.
I was going to say, it sounds like it would reduce vulnerability to natural disaster or, God forbid, anything else.
Maybe something like we've dealt with a few years ago.
I don't, don't, don't say...
I've already knocked on the wood here. We actually, a few years ago, worked on a grant program with Connecticut DEEP, where we did actually investigate a microgrid for the center of Simsbury. And just as Mark was saying, what we were looking at is the ability to island off this facility, the fire department, drugstore, supermarket, library as a shelter, and the water pollution control. And we went pretty deep in investigating the ability of using our existing electrical generation from all of the emergency generators to power up all of these facilities. So in the event of a regional power outage, you would essentially go into island mode and you would operate a number of buildings essentially the same way we operate one building now.
So if we did, I know we talked about the solar project on the landfill and, you know, a lot of bigger solar projects, wouldn't that bolster this? I mean, if that's one of those projects that, you know, we could work into this overall community development? And so, all the, these solar panels, would you, I'm trying to get the concept of what contributes to the power that goes to the island? Would that just be like public solar panels, like on public buildings? Or are you thinking that that's residential users also? And...
Residential, be businesses, you know, some of the, some of the big box stores, some of the, you know, any commercial, any, any building that has enough load, you know, can, has a flat roof and has, and has enough structural load that they can handle the panels. We think one of the most interesting possibilities is these parking lots, these canopies, you know, we can see one over at the school parking lot, for a number of reasons. One, it's real estate that is not currently being used for farmland, or you're not generally hurting the aesthetics. One of the important, I think, goals of this project is, let's start to have these conversations so that we can add solar over time without destroying the aesthetic of the town or without taking farmland away. Let's sort of start to think this through already. Parking lots, some might be town, town properties, town owned solar, but it's really everything. One of these, Eversource was kind of excited about, is they, when we said, we're actually doing this, what they call a solar sighting survey, they were curious, well, how much, where are you putting this? Because it's, solar's a bit of a nuisance for them, right? It's much easier for them, they can turn off, turn on, you know, a gas power plant on and off much, and much more predictably and stably. Solar is intermittent, wind is intermittent, you know, the sun doesn't shine at night, and you get a cloudy day and production's on. So it's much harder for them. So if we can help them sort of plan a grid like that, they're, they might be interested.
And if you can imagine, I mean, it's been, it's been in the news, it's been, it's been very public, some of the challenges on a national level with the electric grid. It's critical infrastructure, which has really not been modernized, and, you know, one of the challenges that Eversource has, as Mark said, there's a number beyond solar and wind and local generation capabilities. The grid is not set up to handle that as it was originally designed. And so now they're struggling with, you know, all of a sudden you have a community putting solar up everywhere, how do they handle that extra power during the day? They hadn't anticipated not selling the electricity, so they have to control their generation. So looking forward, and part of where this is exciting, is saying, okay, how are we going to develop a system to handle flow in both directions? And how are we going to change the grid from thinking, sending power out and that's it, to handling multiple sources of energy coming in at different times?
Microgrid is not a new invention. It's been actually done within the United States, not in Connecticut. But if you go out to the West Coast, you'll find also smart grids, that they can actually anticipate loads and not work with them.
As far as programs that we can promote as a town, you know, we have done the solar project and stuff. Can you explain how heat pumps would fit into that? And what exactly would the average homeowner do to...
Right. Heat pumps, or there's something called renewable thermal, are, they're basically
running, they're like a refrigerator, running in reverse. You're basically pulling heat, there's air source heat pumps and ground source heat pumps. Ground source would be pulling the heat out of the water and the ground. Air source is literally pulling the harvesting heat out of the air. And even when the weather's cold, because of the compression technology, they're able to pull the heat out of the air and then bring that into your house. So, it's, it's pure electric, you're not burning anything, and they're, they're about four times more efficient, except when temperatures get very low, but they're generally about four times more efficient than, say, a natural gas or any kind of.
You can buy those now, right?
Absolutely.
Because I think I have one in my house. My husband was very excited about this, so that's why I was, I was hoping we were talking about the same thing. But I know there are restrictions on when it's effective, you know, for the, but he gets very excited running around going, "I'm turning off the oil."
Yep. And you know what? That almost should be the charge that we should have ended with, which is, we're turning off the oil, we're thinking differently. There's newer technologies out there. And the side that I probably get the most excited about is when you start looking at using less energy as, as an overall commodity. And I keep going back to the car analogy, and it may be because I've been at the highway garage too much the last few days, but if you look back in the 1950s and what a car took to travel a mile for fuel versus what we're getting today, and that's kind of when you look at our homes and our businesses and everything else, those same levels of reduction are possible.
And some of this may seem very utopian, but as the, I mean, we know with technology, it will get less expensive, it will get better, so.
Well, and the things of solar cells, they're now coming out with clear glass, I mean, the opportunities aren't just on flat roofs in 2050.
You also have to understand that Simsbury already is sitting in a lead position in the solar. We're ranked number four in the state, and that's one hundred and sixty-nine, ten. It's, so, it's, we already have a community that supports this.
We do indeed. And I know Tom, in the past, has looked at solar on bike trails and power generation through bike trails. So, that is something, I think, the Netherlands do that, right? Is that what you were telling me?
Yeah, and what's interesting, even when you look at, go back to the graph where it talks about the energy that we use in Simsbury, and it's kind of interesting how it all ties in. We had the piece for transportation, and I'm sure there'd be folks on our Bike Ed Committee that would tell you, that's one way of reducing. And same thing, when you look at the P O C D, how you develop your town can change what you need to do in terms of transportation.
So, I'd like to congratulate this board, who adopted the Complete Streets Resolution that is being incorporated into the P O C D, which is also related to the reducing of transportation expenditures and the energy.
So, I'd say as a big wrap-up, I think the more you talk about it and you see the work that Mark did with the Clean Energy Task Force, it really ties in really the direction that this board has been going for years and the, and the community as a whole. And what the ask is tonight is for a resolution with no financial binds, no long-term commitments, but simply that we support the direction that this program can possibly take us.
All right, are there any other questions?
I have a quick question. This little island that you're talking about in the middle of town, so if we have another option.
I'm sorry, we're in deliberations right now, so if you don't mind, can we do that after the meeting?
Ah.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other questions from members of the board? All right. With that, may I have a motion to approve the resolution for a hundred percent C T Clean Energy Concept Program and authorize the first selectman to sign the letter to Eversource?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
While I'm here, if I can have five more seconds of your time, since we're on the subject. Just a quick update on the community shared solar that we had proposed up at the landfill. The submissions that went into DEEP did not, as a whole, meet their criteria. Our submission was, was probably one of the better submissions in reviewing it. DEEP is going to be reissuing another request for proposals, more in line with the exact proposal we put in, which is to not be on farmland, to not be on forested land. So, we may be coming back in a few weeks back to this board to have another authorization for Ameresco that's been working with us to resubmit on that project. But generally, we're not, we're still in the game on that one, so.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you for your efforts. This is pretty awesome stuff, so.
Thank you, and appreciate the presentation.
Great presentation.
And we're going to go on to other business, and we'll start with notification. We do not need action, but periodically, the town clerk is required to notify this board that the town of Simsbury has sufficient number of voting tabulators for the four voting districts in town pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Sections nine dash two thirty-eight and nine dash two thirty-eight A. And you can see, we were given the numbers on the back of the submission, so that's just for information for folks. And then, I wanted to let folks know that Aquarian is pleased to announce their seventh annual Aquarian Environmental Champion Awards. And if people are interested in applying, you can nominate someone who's an adult student, smaller, large business, or nonprofit organization for the champion awards, and awards will go to outstanding volunteer projects that have improved and protected Connecticut's natural resources. The nomination deadline is May first, 2017. I'm just saying, I think we have a prime, so can we have some? I hope we'll work behind the scenes to get this nominated, because that's phenomenal. And I very much appreciated your efforts there. And then, going on to appointments and resignations, may I have a motion to acknowledge the resignation of Denise H. Alfeld, Democrat, as an alternate member of the Historic District Commission, with our thanks effective February one, 2017?
Second.
We'll go at the lane on the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. May I have a motion to acknowledge the resignation of Frances J. Salz, unaffiliated, as a regular member of the Culture Parks and Recreation Commission, effective January thirty-first, 2017?
Second.
With our thanks, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. May I have a motion to acknowledge, with our thanks, the resignation, resignation of Alyssa E. Osborne, Democrat, as a regular member of the Clean Energy Task Force, effective February third, 2017?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. May I have a motion to acknowledge the resignation of Alan Raphael, Senior, Democrat, as a regular member of the Economic Development Commission, effective January, effective February sixth, 2017?
So moved. Second.
Go at the lane on the first, and Cheryl on the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. You have the minutes of the regular meeting of January twenty-third, 2017. If there are no changes, those minutes will stand as final. We'll move on to select and liaison and subcommittee reports. Are there any? Chris, you want to start us off with personnel?
Yeah, so, I just want to acknowledge that Sean, Cheryl, and I, as the Personnel Subcommittee, we have mapped out two meetings a month all the way through the end of June to manage the process of developing the RFP and, and all the tasks that are associated with the Tampa manager hire. So, I just want to let people know, the first meeting is actually next Thursday morning, the twenty-third, at seven thirty a.m., and the meeting will be located up in the Board of Ed Conference Room. So, I look forward to working with the Personnel Subcommittee and Tom and everyone else on that process, so.
All right, thank you. Are there any other days?
Yes, Cheryl and I had our first meeting regarding the 2020 celebration. Those of us old timers, I guess.
Three hundred and fifty years.
Chris and I remember the three-hundredth in 1970, which was a really good time. Actually, I don't remember it, I was about six months old at the time, but I've seen pictures, and it was a lot of fun. And so, we have started to, we kind of laid out, fleshed out a general structure with the help of all the three-hundredth materials that we have on hand, and we have set out kind of a structure of a main steering committee that will have multiple subcommittees that will handle all the different aspects of the celebration. It was five months long in 1970, so we will also be stretching out over several months of great events that are a great celebration of the town, and it's also a great opportunity for the, for economic development and tourism. And so, one thing that Cheryl and I talked about was, as we think about how the next Board of Selectmen will charge our Economic Development Commission, taking some leadership roles in this event is, will, we, I don't want to speak for you out of hand, Cheryl, but I think we agreed that we would recommend that that is one of the things that we would want to charge the newly formed EDC with. It's an appropriate task for them.
But really, we want to know, will there be a beard competition?
Yes, we, I think we unanimously agreed there.
Elaine insisted.
I insisted. I'm already, I'm already wearing that. But yes, yeah, the beard competition from 1970 has got to, that's got to be a repeat. That one's mandatory. There were also a lot of ice cream themed events, and I think we also really feel, there's a lot of bipartisan support for some ice cream themed events, so, you know, we're, we're well.
I remember every word of the song that in third grade, and all the movements with the streamers in third grade, that I was taught that we sang at Eno Memorial Hall, and we actually practiced it, I was at school here, and we practiced in the gymnasium, which is up where all the land use committees are.
Well, I think you should kick us off.
(Singing) My land, this land is your, no, this town is my town, this town is your town, from the Avon border to the Granby Hill.
All right.
I'm so proud of that moment.
That's awesome.
So happy you're able to, we live in here.
I love that.
You know, when I looked at the agenda for tonight, I didn't realize Chris was going to give musical entertainment. There's always something unexpected.
If Mike's not here, someone's got to entertain.
I've had the ribbon for you. Next time, we'll bring the ribbon.
We got to put that down, Elaine, write down ribbons for third graders.
Any other updates? Anyone else have any other updates?
The Community for Care is planning its next public forum on March eighth at the library. It will be a program centered around marijuana use, the questions surrounding legalization, and the difference between marijuana that's available now compared to what people might have been familiar with or not years and years ago. Not your grandma's marijuana.
All right.
So, well, and, and we did that quite intentionally, so that people would realize that there are dangers out there now for, for our kids and other people involved that did not exist, you know, when we were growing up. So, we thought that was important to highlight, and we are welcoming the community in to express their concerns, ask questions. We have already solicited questions from both middle school and high school students, and the questions are fabulous, and I am looking forward to the panel addressing them. I think it will be very interesting.
And it's timely, because there is a piece of legislation to legalize marijuana.
Yes, there is, and we discussed that, yeah.
Yeah, so that it is something that the public should be aware of and informed on.
Yes. I gave the information to Representative Hampton, who is here tonight, and he is going to distribute it through his contacts also. So, we feel very strongly that this is an issue that people should educate themselves on, for both their own personal safety and that of their children, and for our, you know, our, our whole state is going to consider this very important question.
And if you want to get us a blurb, we can either add it to the first selectman's report or send it out in town news and announcements. We can do both, actually, if you'd like.
Absolutely.
All right. Anything else?
No.
Yeah, go ahead.
I move, we adjourn to executive session, is that correct?
To discuss strategy and negotiations.
Yes, I, I got to rethink all that. I move we adjourn to executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section one dash two hundred and sixty, to discuss strategy and negotiations with respect to Martin v. Town of Simsbury.
May I have a second?
Second.
Just for the record, if you please note that Mr. Cook will join us in executive session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned to executive session. I am not anticipating action.
Do you want that, do you want that? You have your meeting at seven thirty.
Yes, we are.
You have your meeting at seven thirty. So, I will be discussing what I have to say in the public body, as Billy and I will. Is that okay? I mean, will you listen?
Yeah.
Okay.
I told you, I'm happy to get, I'm happy to.
No, I don't want to disturb. No, I don't want to.
Yeah. No, I'm happy to talk to you as much as you want.
Okay, so I'll just, thank you. Seven thirty. Cheryl?
Oh, you're welcome. Okay.
I don't think that anyway.
Well, again, with the process, we'll ultimately create our focus groups.
That's fine.
Some outlets.
Yeah, you'll have minutes, so I'll be, will there be minutes available?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, so.